All right, we're all set. Thank you Maggie.
You're welcome.
So we are going to call to session, Kristen, you are the only committee member on the call right now, called a session, our ad hoc governance committee. Are you in agreeance with that?
Yes, you're the other committee member, right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay, yes, yes, I am good.
Great. So we're just gonna do introductions initially, and Kim will start with you.
All right.
Hello, everyone, I'm Kim Mar Torano. I am a governance coach with the Council for Great City Schools.
Good afternoon, my name is Michelle Simmons, serving as the interim chief academic officer.
I am.
Go ahead.
I am Don Kennedy, the superintendent for schools.
Dr. French?
Hi, I'm Kristen French, I'm a board member. And Maggie is our support today, right?
Okay, yes. Maggie, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, hi, everyone, I'm Maggie Dangerfield, I'm the director of strategic engagement.
Maggie, will you do me a favor and resend the link to Courtney?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm Lauren Herderick, I'm also on the Board of Trustees and the Chair of this committee. So Kim, we'll start out with the timeline that you pulled up. I was fortunate enough to meet with Superintendent Kennedy and Michelle Simmons on Tuesday of this week, just to review the timeline, get some background on where they are at. So Mr. Kennedy and Michelle are going to update us in this meeting on where they are at, and we can go from there. And I know we have some meetings coming up with the cabinet level officials and Michelle and Don have done a great deal of work behind the scenes, working with principals and teachers, and the development of the SMART goals. So I think that we're fairly on track, but we can go through the board implementation timeline. I also have some edits that Mr. Kennedy provided to me that I will send over to you, mainly having to do with the check-ins with the board chair and board. He made sure that those dates correlated to our board meeting dates.
Okay, and I also received some requested updates and changes from Trudy as well. Are those reflected? I'm guessing that those are the requested changes that you're referencing?
Yes, more than likely.
They are, they are. So I asked Trudy to reach out to you, Kim, so they are.
Okay, she did request added access to the document, and unfortunately, that's something that we want to have as few people in their editing as possible. So in the future, I think we'll just manage it where if the board officers come to me with a requested change of timeline, I'll happily make that, but we do want to make sure that this is a board document and it reflects as much of what has been approved by the board as possible. So what I'll do is I will not only keep the original dates, but put the requested change dates so that we have kind of a historical value there, so that the board is able to see both what they approved at the board meeting earlier in the year, as well as the requested updates. Is everyone all right with that?
Yes.
Yes, I am. So is it helpful for me? I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, I believe it's the requested changes are on the agenda Monday for the board to consider. Is that correct, Mr. Kennedy?
Well, there's a agenda item for that, but those changes have not been reflected in this document. So if it is appropriate, I can briefly go through those changes now, Kim, if you
Yes, certainly. And I just want to make note Cindy Ellsberg has joined us. I'm only available until half past the hour, so she'll be taking over if we do extend past 5:30.
And just for clarifications, the only changes to date were the monthly check-ins with the board chair, board vice chair, and corresponding with their already existing meeting dates. And they weren't a big abbreviation for the dates that we are already on this document.
Okay.
Yeah, so in addition to those dates, also on July, the three dates that are 7/27/22, those dates indicate that the superintendent would have the draft board, excuse me, the draft goals to the board on the, you know, by the 27th. And what I committed to at the retreat, that on the 27th of July and the 28th, that's when we, the staff would engage with principals. And so that's what happened. And so what I proposed here is to change those three dates of 7/27 till this coming Monday, 8/8, which will, that's when I formally present those draft goals. And they've been posted on the board docs.
Okay.
And then with the monthly check-in, that is for July, that was done.
On the first.
On the first, yeah. And then the only other changes that I proposed are, as Ms. Hederick said, is for each of the monthly check-ins. And so I've gone through the calendar, the district's calendar, to take a look at when those meetings occur, and I've had those proposed, add those to the calendar. So in August, that date is 8/29. In September, that day is 9/26/22. That didn't make a change for October, so that must mean it's good.
Okay.
And then for November, 11/28.
Now, know that these are, in fact, due dates. So just so that everyone is aware, it's not necessarily the day in which everything is going to happen, the exact date. It is, you know, I picked dates based on kind of the end of the month or the beginning of the month, not knowing when your scheduled board meetings were and when our scheduled meetings are. But so know that these don't have to be exact. Is that is everyone okay with that? Or would you would prefer having an exact date and expected date listed on these?
For me, for me, only on these monthly check-ins, because I mean, that way everyone knows exactly when those meetings are scheduled. So and so there won't be any question on that. The other days, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
And December 12/9, no, 12/9, I'm sorry, 12/9. We have, we'll be leaving for the holiday break, I think on 12/19. And then for January 23, is 1/30/23. February is 2/27. 23.
Thank you.
March 3/27. April 4/24. May 5/22. And June 6/26.
Okay.
And if, Kim, if we could get that truly, get this updated version here, when I was available from you, then we'll get that posted to the board docs for Monday's meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Any other, oh, go ahead.
I just want to note that Ms. Waters has joined us.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, and I believe at this time, the individuals that have access to view this document are, in fact, the ad hoc committee members. So Kristen, Lauren, and Courtney, and then as well as Dawn and Trudy. Are there any others that should have view access to this document?
Ms. Simmons, please.
Okay.
And Mr. Kennedy, would you like Anita Huggins as well to have viewing access to this document?
I would, in addition, for Anita Huggins, and then in addition to that, Julie Erickson, because she would be the backup for Trudy.
Okay. Lauren, would you do me a favor and send me the contact information for the three individuals just mentioned?
I can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I can handle that, you want me to, Ms. Hederick?
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
So Kim, if possible, if Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Simmons could just provide an update of where we are in July, does that work as far as the agenda for today?
Yes, and just one, going back to access, would we like to make this a public-facing document?
Yes.
Okay, how are documents typically shared with the public that are board-related documents? Is this something that you would just typically add it as a PDF to your board docs in an agenda item, or tell me more about the ideal space in which this could be shared to the public? Do you have a website or a board portion of your website that we could add it under our?
The public should have had access to see this document when the board voted on it through board docs at our last board meeting and committee at the whole meeting with these updates. Is board the best location, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, so as soon as we get this updated version, Trudy will post it, or Trudy and Julie will post it on board docs, you know, tomorrow, if we get it back tomorrow. And then sort of be a public document then. And then as you ask that question, I'm thinking that as we get deeper into this work on the student outcomes governors and the monitoring process, we would probably have a section on our website that's exclusively devoted to that. So we would have these types of documents there, there also, in addition to board docs.
Okay.
That's premature right now to set that up.
Okay, I have updated that document while we were talking through this. So that is, the links that you have to view that are updated and ready to go, so you can grab that at any time and add that to your agenda items for your next board meeting. Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Kennedy then.
Kim, I have a question.
Yes.
The timeline that we have links to, where were the links sent to? Because I didn't receive the emails to the meeting. So where would I find those?
I believe that I emailed those to you. I will go ahead and look in my records and make sure that you have the direct link. In fact, I'll make sure that everyone that we've identified that should have access receives the direct link to that document so that you can bookmark it for future reference.
Okay, and just for clarification, would you have sent that to a CCSD email or my Gmail?
I think I sent it to both.
Okay, well, I'll just look forward to getting the one that you will resend.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And it isn't board docs from our last meeting, Courtney, just not the updated version with these new dates.
Yeah, no, yeah, the updated one is the one I'm referring to.
Yeah, we don't have that one yet. So we just, Kim didn't want to do any of the edits, but we just went through those before you got on the call, so she'll send that out tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
So the
And just to clarify before, since Courtney was not on, the only changes that we made to the timeline document were the exact dates that Mr. Kennedy meets with the board chair, the vice chair, and the committee of the whole chair. And those were just the exact dates. Those are actually prior to the deadline established on this timeline.
Okay, makes sense.
And that was originally sent on July 8th to both of your emails, Courtney. It's an email entitled Timeline.
No, no, I was referring to the updated, because I just joined, I didn't.
Yep, so that, the link that's in that email there will be the updated document. It's a live document, but I will share it with everyone, including the new individuals after this meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. French?
I just wanted to clarify that also the deliverable date for the goals, the data information for the goals was changed to August the 8th for our COW meeting. So, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
All right, Mr. Kennedy?
So staff, staff have been involved in a number of engagements on goals. Way back in, back in probably late winter, early spring, we had received from a nonprofit organization, Education Resource Strategies, had them do some data analysis for us. So that helped inform some of the goals, and I'll talk about that in a minute. I think it was three weeks ago, we had an all-day workshop off-site that included my staff, some other central office staff people, then we had a half dozen, six principals from across the district. We had seven teachers, including all five teachers of the Teacher of the Year finals from last, for this year. The Teacher of the Year from last year was there, and one other teacher, I don't remember who that was right off the top of my head. And one of the things that that group had been working on analyzing some of this data. And so we had, at the end of the day, we did a lot of small group work, and at the end of the day, we had, we split the group up, the facilitator, I didn't, the facilitator split the group up into two larger groups, it's about thirty-four people. And I think I may have mentioned this to you, Kim, a couple of weeks ago. And so the question that we posed to the group, and that we all were struggling with, it was, it's a simple question, why? After so many years that we've been struggling to have increases in student outcome, where some of them are impedimentous, why, why have we not been able to get there? And so this was not actually trying to get to the goals, but where these impediments are. And so at the end of the day, very end of the day, we had this exercise that there's two, the two groups, seventeen and seventeen, working independently with a set of data. And we came up, both groups came up with three reasons that, three things that we need to work on. And so I will probably update the PowerPoint that I have in the board docs this weekend to reflect that. But I think, Kim, when you and I talked about those three items, you, I think you thought that they may be, they may should be fashioned into superintendent or staff guardrails, or so what. That's why I haven't put them in there yet, because I want to make sure that my thinking, our thing is still right on that. And then, so what, how do we fashion those into guardrails? So let me just briefly tell you what those three things are. So one, the very top of it was high expectations, that we have a a part of our processes, our system here is low expectation. I had a meeting this afternoon with one of our middle school principals, Michael White in Morningside. And he taught in what I was at his school back in early part of the year. I mean, I could see a vast difference in the students, in their attitudes. And so he attributed that to his cultural change in his school, where he's told me that before he got, when he first got there, there was a lot of love of students by his staff, but very low expectation. And so he makes sure that in addition to the love, they created an environment of high expectation. So these folks that I'm talking about, these, you know, half of the school, like school-based people, and they're saying that we have to work on high expectations for our students. The second one was trying to figure out, could we figure out for each grade level, when a child exits a grade, what should that child know? Whether that's academics, what social skills? And so what we identified as an ideal is for, again, at each grade level, to identify those things. And we would do that through a combination of what the academic folks know, that what children need to know, come out of any grade. So for instance, if you're a fifth grade child, leaving fifth grade and going into middle school, what do you need, what skills do you have? Academic skills that you need, what social skills do you need, what other skills do you need? And some of those non-academic skills would be collaborated with families and community. And that was the third area that we really need to significantly increase our capacity and our abilities, our capabilities of engaging families around the education of their children in the community. So that took place. And then last week, with, we have a two-day symposium with principals every year before we, as a prelude to going back into school. And so I spent some time with principals at the very beginning, talking about the goals that we were working on. And then later on that day, they would say, a smaller group of principals, the superintendent's principal's cabinet, so there's a group of principals that come together with superintendent and staff on an ongoing basis to work through whatever. And so we talked a lot more details about goals. And then the following day, on Thursday of last week, we even have a smaller group, and Michelle was in all of these meetings, so she can jump in on what occurred. And but so we waited on all what those goals should be. So in the PowerPoint, I can go through PowerPoint if you want me to, I have it on, I can put it on my screen. But in that PowerPoint that's on board docs now, it lays out what those three goals are. One is reading on grade level, and that we would all, would take those, that grade level reading and disaggregate it with sub-goals for subgroups, the goals for subgroups. So that's one, reading. The second one is math, and specifically, the number or the percentage of students in the eighth grade that are enrolled and successfully complete advanced math, specifically Algebra I. In the board docs, there's a, there's a attachment from this nonprofit analysis that was done by nonprofit ERS, Education Resource Strategies. And it specifically addresses this idea that the district is not doing a, a really, not doing a good job of enrolling especially minority students into into Algebra I in eighth grade. And it's a couple, you know, indicators of what's happening in the earlier grades, leading up to the eighth grade, that kids are not, as they're testing in the seventh grade for the potentiality of going into advanced math, that not enough kids prepared to be able to be eligible, minority students. Like for instance, we have in the eighth grade, thirty-three percent of our students are African-American, and I think we only have like six percent that are eligible for advanced math, and then only four percent of that are enrolled in advanced math. And so they also, so being prepared for the work is one. And then the other thing is that access, even when we have kids, minority kids, who are successful in being eligible for the advanced math, a significant number of those are not being placed in there. And so what this analysis observed from this outside group, when they look at the course offering and saying that each, all, a hundred percent of our middle schools have advanced math, a hundred percent. But so the indicator from, the indication from them is that that is a matter of kids that are eligible and not getting enrolled is because of placement, not because, not because the programs are not available. We simply are not enrolling kids for whatever reason. I don't know what those reasons are. And so I focus on eighth grade math, because that's, as y'all know, a gateway to the future and to to high school and beyond for our students. And again, breaking those out by sub, the goals by the subgroups. And then the third area is college and career readiness, and trying to increase the percentage. And I think right now, we're at sixty-seven percent or so, whatever those indicators are. And then trying to bump that up to wherever the graduation rate is, at eighty-six percent, looking at the sub, sub, subgroups also, and looking at all the the types of indicators that indicate whether a child, a student is college and career-ready when she graduates. So guardrails have been identified by a number of people that here have been working on this for a while, and then also these, these goals in these three areas. So reading would be addressing primarily the elementary schools, math, middle school, and college and career-ready, the high school.
Thank you for sharing those with us, Don, and I appreciate all the legwork that you've done on this, particularly with the research that you've received. Ultimately, I do want to let the team know and reiterate that the board will ultimately develop the goals and the guardrails. The superintendent will, will develop the interim goals and the interim guardrails. So with, with the foundation that you've built, the board will go out, have conversations with their community, do those community engagement and listening sessions, and really hear from the community, where is it that our vision and our values lie? Our vision will then be represented in those goals, our values in the guardrails. So know that these are, these are great jumping off points, but ultimately, the board will write and own the goals, as well as the guardrails. And you will make recommendations and interpretations of those using the interim goals and interim guardrails. And Cindy, I see you unmuted a couple of times, you want to jump in?
Yeah, yeah. So I, what I wonder, and I was trying to look at the timeline to find out when the actual when the board is coming together to, to select goals and guardrails to take back out to the public. And I'm, of course, can't find that tab at the moment. When I was hearing what you were reporting on around those three, around when you did like the root cause of why you are not getting to where your, to the student outcomes, what I was hearing more so than guardrails was strategic objectives. So I I am not sure that those, that while you might write some guardrails to recommend to the board, like I said, some of those sound more like strategic objectives to me versus, versus actual guardrails that the board would write. Strategic objectives used to actually hit those student outcome goals. So just wanted to, wanted to throw that out there as well.
And with those, if they were strategic objectives, would they be incorporated into this whole process with the student outcome governance process?
They would be yours to, to, as part of the implementation. The superintendent owns the operationalization of the goals and guardrails. So if those were objectives that you needed to employ with your staff in order, you know, if you needed to to do something around high expectations, around access, around any of those things, then that would be, that would be up to you to do. And the board may want to use them as guardrails as well, but, but know that they're, that they aren't lost necessarily if, if the board doesn't write a guardrail about them.
And then also, the other thing I would say, just to be clear, not on that, but what you see in the, what I just walked through in the PowerPoint, what you'll see is that it says recommended, it's recommended to the board, these goals are recommended to the board. And it also says draft. So with the expectation that we don't have, I don't have an expectation that those will necessarily be what we, the final, the final goal.
I was wondering if this is a time to ask some questions about some of what you have gathered in advance of the COW, or do you prefer that we submit questions in writing that you can address?
Well, I'm open either way, Dr. French, the PowerPoint's there, that, that ERS analysis is there. We also have some other data, the local, local data that we show by subgroups on, like on the reading goals. You guys heard me talk about the percentage of kids reading on grade level. So there's a table that shows that eighteen percent of our African-Americans read, only eighteen percent read on grade level, only twenty-five percent spank. So that type of information is in that PowerPoint. So if you, when you look at it, you need to send questions, that's fine. Or obviously, we'll take questions also at the committee of the whole meeting.
If it's okay with you, Mr. Kennedy, can we ask some of those questions now? Because I think it might help with the conversation, or if we need to make any tweaks to the PowerPoint for Monday's presentation.
Sure, no problem. You want me to bring the PowerPoint up on my screen?
That would be fantastic. Kim and Cindy, does that That would be fantastic. Kim and Cindy, does that work for you guys?
It's okay?
Let's see, so I don't see it. Have you pulled it up?
I'm working on it.
Welcome.
Thanks, Maggie. There what, I'm on the, on computer I don't normally use, so let me, whatever question you can start off about, go ahead.
Can I just verify the, I haven't looked at the agenda, I apologize for the committee of the whole. Is that just an informational item? That's not an action item, correct? Regarding the, the data that you've gathered, it's, it's you just providing those items that are listed on the new eight-eight deadline on the timeline, correct?
On the timeline, on the timeline, I listed as an action item on the timeline that we just went over, those dates. And then on the other, on the, on the goals, I listed as action slash information. So that means the board can either take action, action or not take action. Now, we, we, now, if that's inappropriate, we can change that.
Yeah, I was under the impression that, that you were going to be making some recommendations based on that research, but ultimately the board was going to go to the community to do those listening sessions before approving anything with regards to the goals. Is that inaccurate? Are we all on the same page with that?
Yes.
Other questions, I'll roll this up.
Sure.
And Kim, just to clarify as well, with the timeline changes of the dates, the only one of substance that wasn't, that was changed is, is when he would present with the eight-eight. The other dates are prior to the deadlines. So do we have to go back to the board for approval with the timeline changes that we made?
You don't, and honestly, you don't even have to go back to the board for approval with regards to the, the missed deadline of seven-twenty-seven. I can make a note that we're slightly off track. It's not a problem to be slightly off track and identify the date in which it was met. If you would like to bring it to the board with an update of the new desired deadline, you certainly can, but it, it's not necessary.
I mean, I think for transparency purposes, we can mark it as an information item and I can provide the update of why, of the dates that were changed and the reasoning behind that, so everyone's aware.
And I like that.
And note that it is in board docs and the timeline has been updated. But really, the only one that was tweaked past the deadline was the, for our eight-eight meeting.
I have a question about that, about just the updating the board when, when the shifts happen, et cetera. How much of this, so, so we have these meetings as ad hoc and then I know we're going to shift to having the sort of monthly or so update meetings with just the board chair. And I'm wondering if this group is going to continue to meet alongside that or, or if it'll just be those meetings after this one? Because I'm just thinking about who owns the responsibility for updating the board on, on that type of stuff moving forward. Kim, I, I think that was more a question for you in my mind.
Yes, you know, in the timeline, it identifies kind of who the owner is. Much of the work will be done by the board. There, whenever an item says the board in that timeline, it is our hope that we're having those conversations with the entire board. So the board leadership as well as your, your coach, me, we will kind of manage and make sure and, and have those, as we're doing those monthly touch bases, what we're going to do is look at the timeline, look at what our expectations are of the month ahead, make sure that, that things are calendarized and put on agendas appropriately so that we achieve what we've set forth to do. Does that, does that clear things up for you?
Somewhat, I get, give me one second, the, the main thing was absent of these meetings was the only meeting that would be happening between, you know, the board chair, superintendent, you all. Or would you, would the rest of the board be more clear and involved in the process of what's going on? And it sounds like they will because you'll still be having conversations with the board.
That is correct.
Okay.
Just one second, we had a six, seven, eight number join the meeting and I just wanted to see if they would introduce themselves. Can whoever join via phone in the six, seven, eight number just introduce themselves?
They are muted.
Yeah. Okay.
Can you hear me now? Yes, can you hear me now? All right, so I'm, I'm Michelle Eber. I didn't know this was a small meeting.
We're just live streaming it for the public.
Oh, live, well, this is live, right?
It is.
Okay, I, so you asked who joined the meeting, me?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is Don, shall I go ahead and proceed if I can do this?
Yes.
Okay, so just before I do that, quick question, I want to just make sure that I was trying to change out my technology here. So for Monday, for these two items, the PowerPoint on the goal, I'm sorry, not PowerPoint, but the goals and then the timeline, those are going to be information, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I had a question about this in terms of when you, you're showing us a goal, but you're not showing us where you pulled the data for where we are. And, and so I thought that what we would be getting is where you're getting the data. Does that make sense?
Well, let me, let me show you what I have and then, then, then let's see what, how I need to modify what I have, okay? Okay, so this is the committee of the whole, recommended student outcome goals prior to go here in the reading. SC Ready, increase ELA from forty-nine point one percent, which is currently to seventy-five point, seventy-five percent. And I don't have on here, so we did take a look across the state and the, the, the school district with the highest rating right now, the highest percentage of students that are reading on grade, you know, that meet or exceed grade level expectation on the, on the standards here is Fort Mills, Fort Mills up in the northern part of the state at sixty-seven point seven percent. So they have, they have a, a poverty rating of five percent. So only five percent of the students in, in, in poverty. And their, their, their achievement levels at sixty-seven point seven percent. So we set a goal here, proposed goal at seventy-five percent, which is significantly higher than the highest, highest district in the state. And then as it says here, plus, plus subgroup goals. So for instance, I mentioned that we only have eighteen percent of African-American students in the district reading on grade level. And so then we would have a sub-group, a sub-goal that would significantly increase that, that would help get us, get us up to the seventy-five percent. The indicators that we selected, the, at, at the very end of this PowerPoint is a, two pages, I think, then lays out what all these assessments are. So the kindergarten readiness assessment, fast bridge, et cetera, gives a description of what those are. So leading indicators here, the KRA, pre-K, fast bridge for kindergarten one, I-ready assessment and map for, I-ready assessments for grades one through five and map for, for the middle school students. One, one of the things you'll see here in this prior to go is a real focus on, on kindergartens. In one of our meetings we had last week with the principals, we had one principal, which I consider a principal that has a lot, a lot of end-up knowledge on, on student data. And she brought up the point that, that if we do, if we do not address the early learners, when they come in, they're coming in below grade level when they come into elementary school and that we will probably never catch up as, you know, if we don't, if we don't address that. And she went on, on to say that across the system, what we were experiencing, that even kids that are coming in from kindergarten, who, who score ready, ready on the, demonstrate readiness on the KRA, the kindergarten readiness assessment, that in the first year of their, in first grade, that they're actually losing ground. So even when kids are coming into the system, that, that are, that are, where they are, there are indications that they are ready, something, something about our instructional approach is, is not, is, is causing our kids to lose ground. Michelle, you like, could you say anything more on that?
Yes, so that, that's the idea. We feel like if we focus, have a priority area around early literacy, early numeracy, those basic foundational skills, we can accelerate achievement when we focus on those early grades, K and one, so that before they even get to second and third grade, we have a remedy, a solid solution for closing the gaps that exist when a lot of our scholars enter school with these big gaps and deficits. So that's why you will see us focus on that priority area of kindergarten with that KRA.
And then, I mean, so when, when we talk about Dr. French, some of the data, I mean, for me, this, this, this data point here is, is significant, indicating the problem. Now, this, this says projected efficiency over time, so let me explain what this is. We asked the NWA folks, that, the organization that, that owns and does all the analysis on, on MAP, on the MAP assessment. We asked them to take a look at the South Carolina standards as they currently exist right now here and then use the data. We, we started using MAP back here in two thousand and five, I was here when we bought the system. But so we asked them to take the, because the standards have changed over, over time. And so we asked them to take a look at the standards as they currently exist and go back and look at our MAP data over time, going back to two thousand and five and do a conversion to, to make the, the scores here back in, in the history reflect what the, what, what they would have been if this had the same standards. How they do that, I don't know, but that's, this is what they came up with. And so you see from two thousand and five to two thousand and eleven, we were making steady progress at fourteen-point increase. That was two point three percent per year. We spent a lot of time in this offsite exploring what was going on then versus what, what's happening now. And what we also asked NWEA to do, which we don't have yet, we, we should have it next week, because I think there says it would take three weeks and it was two weeks ago we asked them, is to take the same approach, we're looking at our subgroups. So the next time you see this, well, you see it Monday, but the next time after Monday, in addition to having this district average, you'll have this disaggregated showing of the subgroups, African-Americans, Hispanics, and that, that may be it, and probably whites. So, so you will see, you could, you'll clearly see on a line graph here where the problems are. And then the other piece here that we, we show, this is simply taking a look at the SC Ready scores that we have currently. Well, these are not current, this has been spring of last year, we haven't released the ones for this year yet, the state hasn't. And but it shows up that, that forty-nine percent on grade level and then where all the subgroups are. And so that, so that's the, the data that we, the section that we have on, on the reading. So I'll pause here and see what questions you have on the reading before I move to the map.
Well, one question I had is that you had been talking mostly about goals that were about fifth grade. And there's some difference in the way you're presenting some of this, where you say all students. And I, I was a little unclear on that and it might be helpful just to make sure we know if you're, if you're focusing, if you're recommending a focus on a specific grade level or if you're looking at a broader spectrum of grades.
Yeah, so it's a combination, I don't, so this seventy-five percent is across the board. So it's a broad spectrum with these subgroups that, with the subgroups and one of those subgroups would, would include fifth, fifth grade only. So you would have African-Americans, you would have Hispanics, et cetera. And then the early learners here, the kindergartners, and then you would have specific grade level of, of fifth grade.
And so I was going to ask Kim this too, because if we are, if the board sets the goals and we decide to set a goal that is not specific to a smaller group, does that preclude the district from setting internal goals to track? Or would that diffuse their work? I know that we talk about having fewer goals so that we stay focused and we can focus our resources. So I wonder if you could help understand that? Because it's possible the board will want to focus on a subgroup, I just don't know yet.
Kim had to step off, but Cindy.
Oh, that's right, Cindy, Cindy, can you help with that?
Sure, yeah, so, and I'm glad you asked that, Kristen, because I was, I was thinking the same thing. So when the board goes to adopt goals, you adopt one to five. Otherwise, you're, you know, we talked about the, the gallons of gas and the number of, of trucks or cars or whatever. So the board, and, and if it's a broad goal, so are we talking, when you say all students, is this all students K-12? Are that forty-nine to seventy-five percent?
Yeah, this is, this is looking at, we would break, that's good, I'm not sure, we didn't have that discussion. So but my, my thinking, and I certainly will, will, you know, we'll explore this with you all and, and the, and the team, the, the staff, is that this would be the kindergarten. And so the, the focus on reading is at the elementary level. And, and so the, the, the thinking here is that, that seventy-five percent, that in order to, to increase to whatever percent, that in order to get there, there has to be a focus on the students who are significantly below level. And that's where the subgroup groups come in, African-Americans, Hispanic, kids in poverty, one of those subgroups that we select. And so it would not be necessarily a focus across, across all grades of students for where the problems exist. And so the so-called gap.
Well, is this forty-nine percent number, is that district? Is that the whole, all grades or all grades in elementary or is it fifth grade?
Yeah, that's, that's, thanks, Kristen, that's where my question was.
Michelle, you, you have answered that, I'm assuming that that would go up through wherever, wherever the, wherever SC Ready is.
Right, third through eighth graders take SC Ready and that's what that forty-nine point one is based on. So it'd be elementary and, and middle.
So that's what that number represents, okay, thank you.
So one recommendation there then is to say that right there in the goal, by June twenty-twenty-seventh, the percent of all students grades, sorry, I missed what you just said.
Through, through eight.
Three through eight scoring meets circ seeds on SC Ready. So you could theoretically, the board could choose to have that overall goal of grades three through eight and they might, as one of the five or one of the three, whatever you land on, and then choose one of the subgroups or just use the, the other population, yeah, this, one of the smaller populations, some, some populations. But I would also, whatever you take out, if this is, if these are going to be the goals that are being recommended that the board take out to the community, then I would make sure that those, if it's going to be, you know, like, for example, the percent of black black male third graders reading on um, meeting or exceeding S C ready E L A. Uh, increases from this to this. I would, I would suggest that those high need, high leverage goals be delineated so that the board is very clear about what they're taking out to, to the community. And you only have five.
Cindy, I do have a question there though, because this was all what was going in my head as well. Uh, I mean, as you know, from the retreat, I, I, I feel strongly that the goals actually need to center on whoever's performing lowest. Uh, but then my question would be, wouldn't that change the end goal? Because the lowest groups, if if black students are performing at twenty seven percent, then that's actually gonna change where we're trying to get to.
Yeah.
As well. Um, but I mean, and I, I can't, I, I, I wouldn't have any issue if, if we set it as an interim goal. I suppose, but I do think it just makes a bigger statement to set it as the main goal. Um, obviously, the board and the community has to decide that that, that they want that too. But I just know that we would have to, you know, deal with the numbers and and the projection for where they should go all over again, because they're not even at forty nine percent. And we just don't want non-students of color or or students who are not struggling to learn English for the first time, and all of those students to pull up those averages. And we still do what we've historically done, which is leave behind everybody who um is is less, has less ability or access, et cetera.
I absolutely agree with that, and I, I wanted to mention a couple of examples I've seen where I think Cindy's school board actually did focus on uh blackmail students in a subpopulation, uh, like at a grade level. And then that they based their goals on that. But then I also saw, I believe at Seattle Public Schools, they have basically their first two goals. One is for all the students in the grade level that they're looking at, I believe. And then the second one is for African Americans students. So they had two different goals. Uh, written out, so they prioritized all the students, but they also prioritized the subgroup that really needed more help. And they, they are needed uh that were having more difficulties at, with the system in terms of learning. So it was interesting to me that even though they started from different places, they had us the same end goal. And I don't know, um, I guess it depends on where you're starting from, and it depends on what you think you can leverage to get there. But I can, I can, I see what you're saying, I just see what you're saying, Courtney, that it might not be realistic to say if African American students who are like at seventeen point nine percent. Maybe having that goal seventy five percent in five years may not be achievable. And we, while we want to stretch and push uh the district to do as much as we can, we don't want it to set it up to fail. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna follow up and say is that, one, I certainly think it's the epitome of a culture of high expectations, that we wanna get black students to seventy five percent too, but also is that gonna happen in five years considering the decades and decades and decades of of black students lagging behind, or Hispanic students, or you know, insert whichever subgroup we're discussing.
Right. So, well, but should we go to the next section, or we have more questions about this one?
So, for Monday, are we okay with leaving this for the reading section, so we haven't gotten to the other section? As is, or do, or do, or do you prefer to have some modifications?
Well, this isn't really written in the format of the SMART goal, the way we talked about at the retreat.
Right.
Because you have forty nine percent to seventy five percent, but you don't have the time points there. So ju- forty nine percent in June of twenty twenty one, is that the, when the data came from? To seventy five percent in June twenty twenty seven. To make it really clear, this is where we are at this point in time. And this is where we're aiming to get to at, at this next point in time.
So we were intending, um, Dr. French, to put in the interim goals, so um, that's the big picture twenty twenty seven. But we would have targets for twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. This was just a draft, a starting place for us. But I understand you, you would like to see more specifically.
Not each year, I'm not talking about the interim goals, I'm talking about the fact that the starting point is a specific point in time. And it needs to say that. The spring, it could be spring, it can be a month, but it needs to say what year does this forty nine point one percent come from?
Hmm, okay.
And then what year, we know twenty twenty seven is our goal, but let's put it in the sentence there next to the number, I think it's just a little more clear.
Okay, Cindy just put it in the chat.
So.
Okay, thanks, Sandy.
So I, I, I understand what, what you're saying. Um, uh, after um after this coming Tuesday, uh, Michelle and the rest of the cabinet will understand what, what, what you're saying. Because uh, all, all of us are going to go through the same training.
Oh, great.
That the board went through uh a month ago, a little over a month ago. And so um, so I, I, I'll, I'll have that changed and uh, and then we'll all have an understanding after uh Tuesday. All right, um, and going to the math then, so it's following the same format here, so the math goal, I talked about uh, the uh, complete percentage of students successfully completing advanced math courses uh, yeah, in grade eight, specifically grade eight, specifically algebra one. Um, and uh, we have twenty, twenty twenty two data, but embargoed right now. And that won't be released until I think, uh, was it September first or so, Michelle?
Uh, now it's October, it used to be September fifteenth as the uh open date, but now it's supposed to be October.
Okay, okay, wow. So, well, maybe we'll have to go back to twenty one then, twenty one data. In, in, in terms of getting this out to the public, or, or, you know. Um, some of the same type of, again, the, bringing this out by subgroups. And then um, and we don't have the, and we'll, we'll change, I, I changed, we don't have the, the, the targets in here yet. Not a starting point, uh, but just wanted to make sure that the board was okay with us pursuing aggressively the uh, this goal. This, this notion of kids in eighth grade, taking the eighth grade math. And then um, this, 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 this data line here is the same concept, same thing that uh on the reading, what, at the, at the uh, N W A people. Had, had converted, and you see the slopes are the same, essentially the same. Um, and then we have a table that shows where we currently are. And then here, now, this says E R S data analysis. Uh, in this one, they have ten different dimensions that they do this type of analysis in. Uh, one is empowering rigorous uh content, in this case in math, in subject math. And so these three po- uh, these three bullet points here. Um, said the following data informed the recommendation of increasing the percentage of students enrolled in and successfully completing algebra one. And then the data analysis was completed by E R S, and then looking at C C S D data associated with advanced math for eighth grade. The key question explored by E R S, here the last bullet, the key question explored was, is each student enrolled in courses that set them up for success in college and a meaningful career? Including act, equal access to advanced courses. And I would uh contend that the data that they showed for eighth grade advanced math would, that the answer to that question is no. And in the board docs, there's a uh, an attachment uh that um, that, that, that gives that section of the E R S analysis. That specific, that the entire section on their analysis on uh eighth grade advanced math. So that is um, that's another set of data that uh, that we have for you, for your, for your review. So that's the section on, on um, on math. Uh, pause here, uh, Michelle, any other thoughts on that? So, so what questions you have on, on the math section?
It sounds like there's two lifts. One is to make sure that Af- African American and Hispanic students, pupils in poverty are getting the instruction they need to be ready to take algebra one. And the second lift is to get them to take it, and that it wasn't that there weren't courses available, or that the classes weren't available, it was that there seemed to be, seemed to be a barrier of students who uh, were qualified to enroll. For some reason, they weren't actually enrolling in the algebra one class. That's what I took from the E R S analysis.
Exactly, those two points. So, so then, we, so, so the district would have to spend, uh, spend some uh focused time before the eighth grade on students, getting them ready, and you know, uh, be, be able, able to qualify way before the eighth grade. And then once they qualify, what are those barriers that have been set up, that exist? That keep qua- uh, uh, students, they will qualify from, from enrolling, uh, being enrolled in the uh, in these courses, in their own board.
And I guess I was thinking that, and, and looking at that big picture, that the goal would, that the board set might be around getting the students prepared, making sure they're prepared for that high level math by eighth grade. And the issue of the barrier might be a strategy that you have to employ. Or it could even be a guardrail that we, we will not uh, the district will not neglect to do whatever, you know. It's hard to, it's hard to think of guardrails on the fly, because they're real picky about how you say it, but you know, the, the district will not um, default stu- any students who are ready to take algebra one into a lesser course. For instance, that you would always make sure that they are being pushed to consider that higher level course.
It said, Kristen, that, that sounds um, right to me too, but Cindy, I do have a question for you about whether you can, so obviously, uh, it's very easy to make SMART these data-driven pieces. But the qualitative pieces, where it's more like adult interaction with students and adults believing that students can do the work. Can we though, get to a point where we can quantify them so that we can keep them out in front as goals, or do they have to be guardrails? I mean, I, again, I, what Kristen said sounds right, but I want to make sure we don't miss the opportunity to do it if possible in the goal section.
Yeah, so um, you wouldn't, so it's about what students know and are able to do. So um, some of what you're talking about with the adult interaction, that would make sense as a gar- guardrail. And then when, when the superintendent would be bringing interim, their interim guardrails um, to show you, and those are written in SMART format, um, to show how they're honoring that. So for example, some board, some superintendents will measure something about high expect, you know, that, that um, superintendent will not allow low expectations for um, for our uh, for our students, whatever that might, however it might be written. Uh, superintendent might bring an, an interim guardrail around, I don't know if you use the panorama survey, survey, but um, around, you know, so uh, students scoring uh self-efficacy, like that, that particular question will go from this to this, or student teacher connection, whatever. Whatever that correlating um, correlating thing on that uh, would be, would be what would be brought as evidence. So you would see, you could see, depending on how the superintendent interpreted and brought those interim measures.
One thing I do feel like is this data is digestible for us, say, in the public, and so if we need to really specify the goal based on some of the subgroups provided, we can do so. And this is the best kind of data presentation that I've seen, where you can actually like pull out what's really happening.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's very helpful.
Okay, so I'll go to the last goal here, and that's this, any more questions on the math, comments on that? All right, so college and career readiness, high school goal, uh, so currently uh, it's sixty seven point seven percent of our high school four-year cohort. Are considered, um, six, seven, sixty seven point seven percent is considered college and career, career ready, based on these indicators down here, these leading indicators. And so the intent here is to, to push that out to eighty six point two percent. And I asked Michelle, I'll talk a little bit about that, uh, uh, our data person, an assessment person, Buffy Roberts, uh, she, uh, she came up with this, and I think, uh. And, and Michelle, if you could jump in here, I think right now, uh, the eighty six point two percent relates to our, um uh, the uh, the percentage of kids that are graduating on time, uh, in this four, four year, in a four-year cohort, is that correct?
Right, absolutely. And, and those uh indicators in bullet form feed into that. And so um, we had a lot of conversation about the goals and cabinet on Tuesday. And uh, and of course, was one of the indicators we took a look at as well, but um, that doesn't necessarily factor in to this percentage, so we wanted to be as a, as aggressive as possible, um, because the difference in K through eight in high school is there's no one uniform assessment um, that we can bank on, and so that's why we listed as many indicators as we um could, that would feed into college and career readiness. Can I ask a question, and maybe it's for Cindy, or uh, it could be, because Michelle, I just realized that y'all hadn't taken the same training. So maybe it's for Cindy, but the dual credit, six hours with a C or higher. Is, or actually, Michelle, the first question is for you, is that the end of term score? I'm just trying to figure out if it's an outcome, or if it's an, you know what I mean? It is the ending score, if they end that course with that C or higher, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and I think that, that sort of leads me to my question, which is, you're calling these leading indicators. And I'm concerned if it's really a lagging indicator of where students are. And when you look at the next slide, I, I have a really hard time understanding where that sixty seven point seven percent number comes from. Because all of these numbers are individual for the assessments, and I'm assuming that you're taking it somehow from a complicated look at all these groups, but I, I don't really understand where that sixty seven percent comes from. And it, and then you mentioned high school graduation, and I don't think we want to tie our goal to graduation.
So the tricky part, the tricky part in what we could have qualified at the top of the conversation is, all of our most current data is still embargoed. So Buffy's using previous data to come up with these projections with every intention of updating, updating these percentages, so that's why it may seem odd.
Okay, so given that, does, uh, these numbers are projected as well? Or is this, there's this unembark, this is earlier.
That's last year's data, from twenty twenty one, and, and we have twenty two data that we aren't able to share. Because if we shared it with the board, then it becomes public information and it's embargoed until October fifteen.
Right, but she's projecting that based on the data that hasn't been certified yet.
Right.
Okay, okay, that makes more sense. Um, but I guess I just wanted to make sure. And, and Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, maybe these are the right things to look at, it is leading indicators of readiness. Uh, but um, certainly with interim goals, you want to be using something else that's gonna lead up to that, right? So if, for this goal, which is college and career ready, is, do you think this is, these are leading indicators, Cindy, or lagging? I'm just trying to make sure I understand, to be honest.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at this, so all students in the four-year cohort who are college and career ready will increase from sixty seven percent to eighty six point two percent, so. I'm trying to think of goal, so when you talk about the four-year cohort. So we're starting to measure students.
This seems like this would be at the end of their four years, is that correct?
I think, I think, Dr. French, so for the first two goals, I think our indicators in terms of being leading, formative assessments, things we can actually use to still adjust instruction is right. But it might be worth us taking another look at just how we frame this. Because leading indicators and lagging indicators reference, okay, S E ready is a, a lagging indicator. We get the results back and there's nothing we can do to change them. Um, and so I think that's worth us taking another look at. I'll, I'll talk with Buffy Roberts, our assessment and evaluation, um.
Right.
Here about that.
Yeah, because I know you can take the S A T more than one time, but not everybody does. So you can't really use it to lead for some groups of students, sorry, Courtney. So you can't really use it to lead for some groups of students, sorry, Courtney.
No, 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 I didn't realize you weren't finished, but, but, because my question was, and I'm, I'm seeking understanding too, because. I'm not a data specialist, but the, the wonder that I have. Is whether, since we will have interim goals, it's okay to have the lagging indicator up there to let the public know what it is that we're. Going to be looking at as the final. And it's really a question, I, I don't know, because I'm wondering if the, because even Kristen, because remember, I was wrong about that in the retreat. Even with the SAT, it technically wouldn't be taken multiple times, so it is still an outcome, and it's not. You know, students aren't required to take it over and over, so you don't have like a, you know, a formative, it's not a formative assessment. And so I'm wondering if these can be used, and we figure out.
They can, I think what comes down to is, what do you call it?
I got you.
Do you, what, do you call it a leading indicator or student outcome that? That is what we're aiming for here, does, is that right?
Now that you posed the question, I think it's worth, um, revisiting, Dr. French, and we'll do that.
It looks like Cindy's making a comment too, for us.
Yeah, I, I just put in there that, that even regardless of what, um, what they're labeled. Um, these might be things that, the, that internally staff continues to monitor and might, and I guess. Or are, is it, is it a compilation of these things, yeah, I think, I, I, what I hear is Michelle is going to look into it. But as far as progress measures for the board to monitor, it will need to be data that could be updated multiple times. During each school year, so there are probably measures to be found, um.
Right, so sixty seven point seven percent represents students having at least, oh, you know, two of these, or three of these. Indicators in their portfolio, then maybe that's what we need to understand.
Also, to be cognizant of everyone's time, we're, we're borderlining about fifteen minutes over. So, uh, want, want to make sure that, um. People don't have other obligations.
Like families and kids in the next room.
I've got, I've got, I've got one yelling.
I know.
But I do think this is a great start, and I think that we can. Really work with the community to tweak these and, um, come up with those SMART goals outline. It's exciting that the cabinet and some of the central office staff will go through this training next week, so we're all on the same page. And then as we work through, um, our August tenth meeting to establish those community meetings.
Right, yay.
And we really appreciate the public for joining, Michelle, thank you for joining via phone, and all those that are tuning in via live stream. Uh, we will keep everyone updated, the timeline will be updated, uh, via board docs, and as this process progresses. Uh, hopefully, we will have a website link for this governance process.
I'm wondering, uh, one more thing, and I, I hope this is quick, so Cindy, once we are, we are looking at this information. And then we come back to a meeting in August, the board meeting, would it be appropriate to have a discussion at that point to have some drafts of. Goals that we're going to talk about in the community engagement? Or do we wait until after the community engagement to really formulate those goals?
Um, I think that, I think, I don't have an answer for that right now, I think you could, um. Do it either way, you could take draft goals and say, did we. Did we get, you know, are we on, on, are we on the money on this, or, um, you could take those. Those goal buckets and ideas and somehow have. Get some sort of prioritization on that, um, I'm not sure without thinking more about it, what the best way.
So we'll, we'll probably cover more of that next week, right, on the tenth.
We really appreciate everyone's time, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Simmons, thank you guys so much for the updates, we really appreciate it. Um, letting us answer questions prior to the meeting on Monday. Cindy, thanks for filling in for Kim and being on the call, so helping us, guide us through this process. And of course, to, uh, Courtney and, uh, Dr. French for assisting in this. So are we, are, are we ready to adjourn?
The one last question for me, so this, the, this is the PowerPoint that's been posted on, um. On, uh, board docs, obviously, based on this conversation, we'll make changes to that. But the question is, do we, do we leave it posted as is for the, for the, for the meeting on Monday? And then update later, or do you want me to try to update it over the weekend with, uh, some of these, uh, discussions that we had?
Hmm, if you update it, maybe just to provide the new, the new slide deck as updated. And maybe rename the other one as first draft, I don't know.
Cindy, do you recommend that the team goes through this training, so everyone's on the same page, and then we update? Would that be a recommendation, or?
I, I think that would work, because. Um, I think this is a first, first go to explain the data to the board and see where the. Um, administration's thinking is, I think, I think it's sufficient, and then, then more training. Or once, um, staff has had their training on Monday and Tuesday, then making the updates accordingly with their. New information, new learning, that would, I think that, to me, that would work out all right. So long as the board understands that, you know, these are not in their final format, this is. This is to present the data and where we think. Uh, where we think needs are.
So that would be very, that would be very helpful for me, because right now, staff, I'm the only person that's going through a training, and, uh. My capacity is very limited, and so, uh, next week, we have time, more people are there.
We'll make sure to reiterate draft.
Yes.
Thank you all.